So we have a quorum and we have Patrick Roy joining us today. So on behalf of the RCC, congratulations on your victory. We look, we serve as you probably already know, and if you don't, then it's probably a good idea. We're talking about it. We serve at the, at the pleasure of the selectmen. So, you know, feel free to use us. That's the one thing that this year we wanted to do more of is, is to have projects. We're trying to attract residents of Roxbury and be a very approachable to volunteer their time and, and attend meetings. And hopefully, you know, my vision was that, that we could be the springboard to the other committees within, within Roxbury. So, you know, they, they come and they go and anyways, any words you want to say, Pat?
No, no, still learning everything and I need to be a resource to you as well. I mean, I'm loving what you're doing, so just keep it, keep it going and let me know how I can help. Tonight, I'm only just an observer.
Perfect. We, we thank you for showing up and, and being part of the meeting. Um, let's see here. Let me grab the agenda real quick. And see what we put together here. So listen, we did a lot of things in October. What a busy October for conservation, huh? Um, you know, we started out at the, at the end of the tractor parade, uh, doing the bat houses. Um, people didn't know what to make of that. Uh, if we do that again next year, I'm, I'm going to tell you, we're going to have a line. And everybody who participated just loved it. Um, and they wish they knew about it. They, they thought we were, you know, a couple of people came up to us and said, hey, we thought that you, this was just an activity that a family was doing. Um, so anyways, that, that, that was great. And Caitlin was a, um, well, actually, let's run this properly here. So officially going to call the meeting to order. Tova's joining us right now. Uh, next, we're going to have, so welcome everybody. Welcome Patrick here. Uh, approval of the minutes for October 13th. Our, oh, the last month's meeting? Can I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Um, I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 19th.
And we need Erin because I actually wasn't on that meeting, so we need to wait for Erin to approve them. Oh, Kathy, you were there.
Yeah, I, I, I second the motion.
Kathy seconds it? Oh, uh, Erin is calling me. Hold on. Hello? All right. There you go. You're now on speaker, Erin. Uh, Erin's microphone is broken, so she'll communicate to me. Hold on.
Uh, you know, I'm looking at a copy of the minutes. Minor thing, but, um, me, I thought I shot a note to Erin about this. The date at the top says September 8th. I think she forgot to change the date to October.
Erin? She's telling me that she changed it. Yeah, you might have an old copy.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, uh, any, any discussion regarding the minutes? If I hear no discussion, all in favor approving the minutes? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, Erin, I'm going to officially abstain just because, uh, I was not at that meeting. Any additions to the agenda or public comment? Pat, you would be public comment. Tova, you too. Hi, Tova. Thank you for joining us. Okay. So we're going to have a recap of Bat Fest or Battober, or we have to, you know, we'll revisit next year what we're going to call it. But, um, I think it was a, an overall success for us. Um, started out with the, with the, the, the bat houses. I think we got some good press regarding that. Um, after that, we had the hike. Erin, do you have a count on how many, uh, were on the hike? Twelve folks on the hike over to Mine Hill. Um, but we didn't get pictures for that, right, Erin? Tony, you were there. Did you get any pictures?
Uh, I did not take any pictures. There were some people who might have.
If you, if, if you can reach out to anybody.
I can check with John and see if he's got any, any pics.
Perfect. Uh, then we had the speaker at the library. Unfortunately, not enough people attended that. Um, there's just so many things going on. That, uh, but the, uh, from what I understand, anyone who did attend really enjoyed it. Um, so that was good. And, and, and again, we did, it was the right use of, of the funds that we have. And we'll talk about the funds for that in a second. Uh, then we had the story walk. And I have to tell you, we have to do something for Teresa. She is above and beyond. Um, what a great job that she does. And, uh, you know what, Erin, can you call into the Zoom line so everybody can hear you? Yeah, look, give that a shot. If not, call me back.
Uh, yeah, Teresa really deserves a lot of credit. I, she was, uh, she really headed up as setting that thing up. I mean, there were like tons of volunteers to help her set up.
Yeah.
They were bombarding her with, how do we do this? How do we do that? Where does this go? Where does that? She handled it just unbelievably well.
Well, I'll tell you.
She was very organized. She, she put every, she just assigned tasks to everybody and we got it done.
I tell you, I, I had a couple of guys. So you were there on Thursday, right?
Yeah, I was here helping her set up.
The couple of guys that came from King Solomon's Lodge in Woodbury were so impressed. They said, next year I can't wait to, to help out again because all they wanted was direction. They said they love to work and they just wanted direction and she gave it and it was organized. They didn't feel like they wasted their time. They go, this is the best way to volunteer. When you go someplace, you actually do some work and they, everybody wants to go home at the end, but you feel like you did something. So I,
I, I worked with those guys. They were really good.
Yeah. So if, if anybody could, uh, put on their thinking cap and, um, and think of anything that we could do for her, I mean, I think it'd be a, I think that would be a good show. All right. Is that you, Erin, as the town of Roxbury? Just connecting the audio. Um, so that was that and,
Whoops.
Yeah, turn your speaker off. Yeah, there you go. Um, so that, that was great. Uh, and we definitely need to participate again next year and just build, keep building off of that. But if anybody can think of, uh, a good idea of something that we could do for Teresa or in a library. Um, you know, I, I think, so, uh, Pat, the one thing that I'd like to do is make sure that we're aware of different things. That, isn't there an annual like volunteer award or?
There's the, uh, the volunteer picnic that they do in the summer. Um, but no, not, uh, not any award that I know of, no.
All right, well.
We're going to have to think of something.
Yeah, we, we can plant a tree in her name or something. Uh, get some bees.
That's appropriate.
Um, so that's good. And then she did, and then the follow-up week, she did a bank up job. I don't know, uh, who was able to walk up and down the, the street. Um, she did a, a great job with the, the trunker treat as well. Um, what I, I, it was just nice to see that ma, those many kids in Roxbury. I don't know where they came from. Definitely didn't come from Roxbury. But it was cool that Roxbury was, uh, represented. I, big shout out to Caitlin and Erin for the Bat Cave. Um, I don't know if everybody saw a picture of it, but, uh, it was pretty cool. And we had, uh, um, Bat Dog, Doc, Dog Bat or Bat Dog, Erin? What did we go with?
Bat Dog.
Bat Dog.
That dog is passed out on the couch right now.
Bat Dog was probably the biggest hit of trunk or treat. Um, every child, can I pet your dog? And, and I, I have never seen a better behaved animal.
Thank you. We work hard on that.
Yeah. She was hungry though. Kind of starved her, but.
Yeah. She's a lab. She's eternally hungry.
So that was, uh, that was a recap for, for Bat Month. So before we move forward, the only questions that I have is feedback on, so we did a lot of good stuff. Uh, we know we have to publicize these events better. We know we have to document the events and then, and publicize them better. Um, what are some ideas that we should be taking notes on for the next events that we do? And then for the files for these events next year? What can we do better besides more hands?
I think maybe even at one event less probably would have been fine, but I also think we had five weekends in October. Um, but I think it would have been a little bit more manageable if we hadn't had something every single weekend.
Yeah.
Um, and I think too, maybe, um, more press releases, but I mean, I, I put one in for at least three different newspapers and the library. And I know Barb was doing a lot with the email blast. Um, but at the last meeting, we had talked about doing more specified email, uh, blurbs. So instead of like just having, you know, oh, check out, you know, Roxbury Conservation Commission's Bat Fest on Facebook. Um, break it down a little better with more details to like what's coming up. I think, and then maybe if we'd followed that up with some social media posts too, with those specifics, I think that probably would have, uh, drawn a lot more interest.
So in town, we have, uh, Kate Nixon, and she's been running one of the other Roxbury Facebook pages. Uh, she seems to be really into social media and what have you. What, Erin, was, she was on last month's call.
She was.
Does she participate a bunch?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, she had some really good ideas too. Um, she asked us that, you know, if we ever want anything posted on the Roxbury CT page, she's happy to do that for us. Um, so I've seen her maybe picking her brain a little bit, but I, I wanted to talk to you guys more and see how you felt about it. But, um, maybe if she wanted to like co-run the two pages, um, with one of us, it, I'm happy if that's me too, that's fine. Um, but I, I, I thought that might be someone, someone with a more experienced touch than, than myself.
So what I was wondering is, you know, what I found in other groups is committee work tends to get, has to be a lot more efficient for some tasks like this. Uh, especially when we're going to work with, and with somebody who's not in, in the meeting, may not be attending the meetings on a monthly basis. Um, you know, Erin, I, I know you have a bunch going on too. You're doing a great job with everything, but, uh, getting a little help for you would be, uh, would be very good. Uh, Kathy, Tova, Tony would, would, I mean, does, does social media interest you at all?
Uh, well, I, I bring this up a lot. Roxbury's got an older demographic. And these people are not on social media, many of them. Um, you might want to do a targeted direct mail, uh, regular old USPS mail. Um, you know, I do that with the, I do that with the work I do on the, the scholarship board and, uh, it's very effective. Uh, we do a direct mail every year. Uh, and I've got, I probably have the best mailing list in Roxbury.
Okay.
Cause I, I keep refining it and honing it. I've got every homeowner, every renter. Um, it, it wasn't anybody in Roxbury. I don't have their home address and.
So, and do you do full postage or do you do one of those?
We do a bulk mailing once a year. Uh, and then we do a targeted mailing, uh, in the spring. We do a bulk mailing in the fall.
Yeah.
With every household in Roxbury. It's not terribly expensive. I mean, it's,
Right.
Uh, and then we do a targeted mailing in the spring and I, I send requests out to people who made donations in the past, but haven't made a donation this year.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know,
Well, we, we have basically two avenues to hit those folks. One of them's big, right? We, we would have to do an annual calendar if we were going to do one massive mailing list.
But I'm thinking if, if we have a way of identifying people who, for instance, people who maybe have attended events in the past that we know of.
Well, that's, that's one of the other things. I mean, if, if we did that, we can get, um, an email list. And emails free, it's just cost time.
Emails are free, but people, people have to be opted in. I mean, to be totally fair about this, legal.
Right. They would have to sign up and say, hey, opt me in for, for that.
I have many email addresses on Roxbury residents, but they're not asking.
I was surprised. So at that story walk, I had Tracy taking photos. So basically we, uh, went out and bought a, a backdrop. And she was up and, and we said, hey, the conservation, and, and every, anybody who, who got a photo, got an email and said, hey, thank you for attending the story walk. The Conservation Commission, uh, did this for, you know, uh, is supplying these photos at no cost to you and all this other stuff. So we got some mileage out of it and we asked them permission. There was a couple of people who gave us permission to reuse their photos. She was actually surprised at the number of people said, no, I, I do not want my picture taken. Right? Even though we said we weren't going to use your photo without permission, explicit permission. And again, it's, we have to rec, rep, recognize that there, one of the reasons that there are folks in Roxbury is because they're private.
Yeah, yeah.
And we just have to be sensitive and, and kind of figure that out. But does anybody have thoughts about a, a, a mailing and how to touch, you know? Again, it was not really for today's, but we got to plant the seed for future meetings here. Do we want to try to, to put together a game plan?
Uh, just the recreation newsletter. I think everybody reads that.
Yeah, I,
and that is just so, would be so widespread and readable. There's so much good stuff in that newsletter about things to do in Roxbury that I think you'd have a good audience there.
I have put blurbs in that in the past too.
Yeah. And the thing with that was that it was almost I had to go look for. It didn't seem to jump out as much as everybody else's, uh,
Well, that's, that's a thought. Okay.
Yeah, but me.
Wouldn't it, would it help to, um, I mean, on the, in the newsletter, it often sort of refers you to the, um, the Roxbury, the, uh, Conservation Commission, um, website, et cetera. And, um, I, it just seems to me as though if we could be more direct, um, and targeted in the newsletter about exactly what we're doing without sending the people to another destination.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would, that would make sense. Uh, we can check, I can check with Jimmy and see how many people are going to the Conservation Commission page on the town website.
Yeah, I don't think many.
I don't think many, yeah. I, well, I, I mean, I checked about a year ago and it, it wasn't, it was handful.
I can tell you in a second how many followers we have on Facebook and Instagram. It's up quite a bit and we, we had engagement like on, uh, our Meet Our Farmers, uh, posts. We've had over 700 people looking at them.
Yeah.
Wow. That's wonderful.
Yeah.
So, and a lot of them, a lot of them were reshared.
Just a note on the, uh, on the monthly newsletter, i- i- I think the tractor parade took the front page, uh, on that one like this week. This, uh, this time it's, uh, Barbara's farewell. Uh, but if you can get on the front page, that's what people are going to look at. They're not going to dig inside. So if you know enough in advance, maybe we could do a split where it's tractor on one, on one half, or, you know, you really need to get more on that front page because that's what people are looking at.
Well, what I'm thinking is maybe we could, we could twice a year, you know, build out a, a schedule and twice a year have half of the front page. Uh, or even a quarter of the front page with what we're going to do that next quarter. Um, because, you know, we're not going to get it more than that.
Well, what do you think of what the Land Trust does? You know, they send out a calendar and it's small, it's the size of a postcard. I hang on to it for the, for the Land Trust events.
I mean, but the, the big thing is then we have to commit to a calendar of events a whole year ahead of time.
Yeah.
And I, I feel like we're only just now getting our feet underneath us and, and getting a groove here and we could use three or four more hands still, yeah.
Or do it twice a year or, or when we're having, our, our events seem to be warm weather related and not cold weather related. So perhaps we could experiment with a six month.
Well, let's, let's, uh, put our heads together for next month's meeting and we can decide if we want to do this and then we could tackle for January, sending out a, a six month calendar.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. So Erin, you have that.
One thing I, I can do, uh, I'm pretty good at doing this mail merge thing. So I, I send out about a hundred letters in the spring. And I use my mail merge feature and I put those, put the letterhead in the printer and bang it out. And it's just folding the letters, sticking them in the envelopes and sending it out. It all takes me a couple of hours and I, I get it done.
Well, we could help. If we could help fold.
We could help with that if we decided to go that way, but I'm saying, I'm a re, if we go that way, it's not going to be a major problem to do a, a fairly empty mailing.
Hey, Tony, can, can we use a rural route? Um, what did you call it? A bulk mail? Can we, can we, do we have to bulk mail permit? Cause I know if you do a bulk mail permit, the postage is really negligible.
Yeah, it is. It is. Uh, I use, okay, I use an outfit in Danbury called Focus Mailing. And, uh, we used to do it ourselves and it was a lot of work and we had to pay to get this, uh, bulk mailing permit.
Uh-huh.
Uh, and then I switched over to this outfit in, um, Danbury and it's, it's just a lot more efficient. They do everything. They stuff the envelope. But we're talking about 2,000 mailings. Uh, I don't know if we're going to go that big. I'm thinking a more targeted mailing, um, first glance, but we could do, we could do a bulk mailing.
So,
Go make a, a business call. I have to leave the meeting, but I'm really interested in pursuing this. So thank you for your time. Sorry, gotta leave.
Kathy, before you jump off, would you be willing to work with Tony to get some information on this and?
Absolutely.
Put your heads together and then, you know, report in December on it?
Okay, Tony, yeah. You and I can get together and talk about it, sure.
I can, um, I have, I'm going to have conversations with the Focus Mailing this month regarding the mailing we do in the fall for the scholarship board. So, uh, I'll bring it up. I'll say, gee, you know, what, what might it cost us to do, uh, a bulk mailing, another bulk mailing and see what, see what the story is.
Okay.
It's not going to be major envelope stuffing.
Okay. I'll talk to you later, Tony. You gotta run. Sorry. Bye-bye, everybody.
Bye Kathy.
Bye Kathy.
All right. Uh, Erin, do you have an update on Meet Our Farmers?
Yeah. So thank you, Tova, for all your amazing work. It's actually going really well. Um, we have got a lot of interest and we actually gotten more, um, followers and likes in the last two weeks um, than we have in the last couple of months, which is really great. And I think people are really liking this angle. So I'm really excited to see it, you know, as an introduction to what we could do in the future, um, for our farmers. So it's pretty cool. Um, so we, we've had, uh, up so far, um, Twilight Dreams Farm, uh, which is the old Orzak Farm. And then, um, uh, my, my brain, it's blinking. Holy crap, what else did we have, Tova? Uh, it wasn't Maple Bank, um, oh, Ox Hollow. Uh, we had Ox Hollow. They were our first week. And then, um, this coming week, I'm going to do Riverbank Farm. Uh, they'll be coming up.
Also got, um, uh, let's see, what was, it was,
Chad.
Chad, yeah.
But he hasn't sent me a photo yet, so I'm still waiting on that. Um, once I get that. Oh, did you? Oh, I'm sorry. I'll double check my email.
Yeah, um, if you need me to send it again, I can send it again. Just,
I'll take a look.
Here. It, it was with the, it was with the post.
Oh, okay. I'll look for it, Tova. Thank you.
Okay. But, um, I've got to tell you, we've got this sweetest, most lovable farmers in the world living in Roxbury. They are just a bunch of sweethearts, um, amazing people. And, um, doing this project has been a real honor. Um, they are so supportive of it and so, so grateful. I have a message to you from all of them and that is thank you, thank you, thank you. They couldn't thank us enough for what we're doing. Every time, I mean, from the moment I saw them to the moment I like cl, shut the door of my car, they were saying thank you from the bottom of their heart. And, um, I'm really glad that we're getting the word out about it because I, I feel as though this is a template for lots of communities. And I even think that it's possible that maybe we should put this up on, on, uh, uh, it, you know, mention this to newspapers that Roxbury is doing this because I think it's a really important thing. We, um, broached it or, 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 um, labeled it as our Thanksgiving to farmers, but I fully intend to keep on going with this past Thanksgiving, the Thanksgiving month of November. Um, I, my goal is to add, I think we've got at least another four profiles to do. Um, which should get us through to Christmas, um, I would think. And, um, then, um, and I don't know, this is an appropriate time to mention this. Erin, is this the right time to mention, um, Meet Our Trees?
Oh, go ahead, Tova.
Okay. Um, I thought, I just wanted to propose to the Conservation Commission that we follow up with a, another set of profiles. Although I, you know, again, if other farmers come up, I'd love to keep on rolling with this and, um, I was thinking, uh, that it would be really fun. I got this eureka of doing a Meet Our Trees also because the Conservation Commission, um, is about conservation. We have so many remarkable trees in our town and I'm sure other people will step up and mention, you know, hopefully tell us about trees they have. A lot of our residents, I think, don't know that much about trees and their identity. And to put a picture of a great tree up that's in our hometown and have our residents meet that tree. Um, it would be really a fun little project. Unfortunately, we can't really photograph those trees, I think, to their best advantage until spring, when they leaf out again. But, um, it is a project to think of in the future and, and I kind of, uh, ambitiously thought of chasing it with some of our Meet Our Wild Flowers. So, um, this is, it's all, you know, along these same lines of Meet Hour and, and to familiarize everybody, not only new residents, but all our residents about our resources, what Roxbury has and to, um, you know, uh, give it the glad hand. Uh, really appreciate it. So I'd love to get feedback on it, what people think of these projects. And if people have more ideas for Meet Our Farmers, I have been telling the farmers that will hopefully be doing something more for them in the spring to, um, bring people to them. And, um, Jessica gave me some more, uh, a further list of farmers to look into. Um, and we're trying to really, um, to everybody who's actively farming, we're just trying to give them the, the, the just respect and applause and standing ovations.
So,
I like the, the trees, the, the treating. I mean, I, 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 you know, I don't know that much about trees, but I'm learning and I'm amazed to hear and to, to see the environmental, uh, role that trees play, all the different species of trees we have in town, how they contribute in a unique way uh, to the betterment of the environment.
That's a really good point, Tony. And, and not only to, um, it's a, that's a really good idea to not only meet the tree, but talk about it, those trees as active citizens in our town.
You know, like the, the acorns that fall off the oak trees. They, uh, they're a nesting site for a, a valuable kind of caterpillar uh, that goes in the ground and comes out two years later. And, and it's amazing how the oak trees are on a two-year cycle. It just seems so magical.
It all works. So, Tova, what do you think about, you know, one, one of the things that would help our publicity? It all works. So Tova, what do you think about, you know, one, one of the things that would help our publicity? Is also to have more photos, right? Instagram is easier and friendlier for most people to use than Facebook because it's photo based. I mean, trying to figure out a photo contest for those trees. Um, something along that lines. I, I, I used to joke when I first moved to Roxbury, those cows that are hanging out by Lily Pond Reserve. And there's that one tree right in the middle and uh I took a photo, it was probably the first spring that I lived in Roxbury. And I was trying to show all my New Yorker and lower Fairfield County friends what, what life was like. And I said, this is the Roxbury bovine convention. And so it was basically the cows just happened to be right underneath the tree as it was in full bloom and it was. I wished, I took it with my phone, so it was a crappy picture. Phones ten years ago weren't, weren't great cameras. Um, but uh, but yeah, it was. It would, maybe we could do something like that. So again, put it, you're thinking to cap on and maybe we can work that in. Because we can get a lot of mileage and attraction to, to the different Facebook pages and Instagram pages. Um, and again, it gives, gives somebody some, something to do and something, and an easy way to get active.
Just to add. Could uh put that out there to the um students at Chapag for the photography classes too.
Great idea. So one other thing that came to mind um was, where's Miranda Vineyards? It's in what town? Goshen. So Goshen. This is two years ago, not, not during the pandemic, but the, the, the spring before the pandemic. They actually had a kind of a small business roundup where they, all the farms and all the vineyards. And the little chocolate place that's up there, they all got together and it was an open house day. And you would go from farm to farm to farm to farm and, and each farm had something to, to offer. Whether it was a little speech or a little candy or a little treat or something like that. But maybe that's something that we could do to build off of this Meet the Farmers. Um, you know, you, you, you're making the connections and now at some point, whether it be in the spring or summer. Probably right before CSA really picks up. Um, you know, I, I'm sure CSA is a great way to support these farmers. Has anybody, I know there was talk of it, but did anybody ever? Try to do a joint CSA or is it farm by farm still? I feel Caitlin was talking about this.
Farm by farm as far as I know.
Yeah, which, you know, wouldn't it make sense if there, there aren't, don't certain farms do? More of certain things than others?
Well, CSA is the individual farm's business, which I don't see why. Or how we could get into that, but to certainly to um. To have a farm tour is a really good idea. Um, and I, I feel as though these. Sweetheart farmers would be, just love to have people come on a farm day. Um, and they could. I, I would suggest that it be kind of very informal that they would, you know, maybe give a little speech at a certain time. But people could come throughout the day and we'd have a little map. And, and talk a little bit about, and the map about each farm and what its attributes were, were and. That way, you know, we could have people go around and, and see for themselves what farming is really like. Meet some of these great cows.
And I know Pat, Patrick's probably not gonna be a fan, fan of this, but in Milford, and actually it started in Black Rock. And they picked it up in Milford, Connecticut. They do something called Porch Fest. And you get a little band. Yeah, you get a little band and uh the homeowner uh hires the band and um, you know, it's just. It gets people out and you get a little schedule going and it's not all at one place, you kind of promote moving from one place to another. But maybe we can even have a certain degree of, of that um mixed into it.
But I would suggest that you do it sort of when they, um, when they have things to show you. When they, their crops are perhaps in, and that the farm is really rolling, um. I, I wouldn't suggest doing it real early in the spring when everybody is trying their best, yeah.
Well, look, Tova, we have a, a marketing genius on the uh, or surveying genius on our, on our board here. Um, what I would say is we would survey the farm and see what they would want, how they would want it and when they would want it. And I'm sure we could get a, a, a killer survey together um and then deliver. Uh, based off of that rather than our guesstimation.
Really good idea.
I think he, each farm has, we'd have to find out what unique thing they have to offer.
Yeah.
Like I know the, the, this woman down on Botford Hill, they have the duck eggs. I don't know if anyone in town's selling duck eggs.
Well, you wanna know what? They got, if they don't have anything interesting to offer now, they, or unique, they got six months to make something.
Well, I was thinking of um, if we could put the map of all the farms out in the spring. Like you were suggesting just before the CSA things happen and when they start opening up. Um, to give people an idea of where everything is and then the farm tour could happen a little later on. Once they get growing and, and things to see. Um, but I was really excited to get a farm map together. A couple of years ago, it's been in the works, so um, I really, really am excited to do that. Um, and have that ready to go in the spring.
So, well, let, let's, let's put a couple of things together now and then we got a, a potential map. And we have a potential schedule and a call to action for. Potentially mailing something out to everyone. Why wouldn't we combine those three things? And then this would give us, you know, there's, there's budget, there's, there are grants out there. And we said that we wouldn't go out for these grants unless we actually had the need for some of the money for them. Um, this may be that need. This may be that, 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 that great reason to go out and get some grants. Um. Not to be decided tonight. We're gonna stay within our hour here, but uh.
It's, let me just make one comment. It is a, uh, I think it's a, a, a great thing to promote. Uh, supporting local businesses, particularly the local businesses in your life, like the farms. Encouraging people buy local.
Yeah.
Uh, you got a lot of farms staying here and the stuff's a lot better than you getting the grocery store.
Alright, so the one other thing is, we have um, we happen to have the representative from Roxbury to the Western Connecticut Tourism District. On the call as well, that would be me. By the way, Pat, I'm your representative to, to tourism. And on the tourism, while I do a lot of work with tourism, and not a lot of it's done in Roxbury because we don't have a lot of businesses. But we do, we have the farms. So I can get, uh, I can um. Get some publicity. If we can organize it, I can, I can push that to tourism and use that as our little allocation. Mine Hill has got plenty of public publicity because of this. Um, you might have even seen the, the publications on the, on the electronic billboard. I had Roxbury, Connecticut with the Mine Hill picture and uh publicity for, for that hike. Uh, right on eighty-four, we even had it in, in uh Westchester County as well. So um. You know, we're driving people here. The more stuff they have to do, the more people are gonna get to drive and, and see that little piece of uh heaven we call home. Uh, we got fifteen minutes. We have a little bit more business to do. So A- Erin, just make a note to add this to the agenda for next week. Uh, Tony and uh Tova, if we, if, if you wanna connect offline. Uh, one of the things that we, if you have any ideas on how to survey and when to survey the farmers. Um, probably before the spring thaw, they probably have a bunch more time on their hands to answer our survey and work with us. But let's uh, let's put our heads together and see what we could do. Um, Pat, on a side note, there was, there was. Talk of us reaching out and trying to get a bunch of uh these businesses that are in Roxbury together in, in the town hall. To talk about different uh resources that are available for them in Connecticut, since most of them are farms. Um, it may be.
Let me know and I can set that up.
Yeah, it might be, it might be a good reason to, to have a meeting.
Okay.
Alright, December, bird feeders in your backyard. Who wants to take that one?
Erin? So, sorry, I was trying to unmute and type at the same time and it wasn't working. Um, okay, so um, I uh just recently started up at Sharon Audubon. Um, and I was talking to Bethany, um, who's the volunteer coordinator and they actually have bird seed for sale uh up there and it's pretty reasonable. And so what I was thinking we could do is I'll do like a bunch of infographic and, and educational pieces and everything. And like we can put it um in the newsletter and then maybe on the email blast and Facebook and Instagram. Um, and it's basically about like how you sanitize your bird feeders properly. Um, what different kinds of food at- attract different species. Um, when your bird feeder should go up, when they should come down so that we can, you know, mitigate conflict with bears. Cause that's always a fun, fun thing to find in your backyard. Um, and so the other thing I was thinking too is we could uh give out. Bird seed and have like labels on it with um Roxbury Conservation Commission with the, the different ratios of seed or where you could buy it. Um, and it wouldn't be that expensive, like one bag for each of the different kinds of seed, it, the, the total would be. No more than like a hundred and fifty, a hundred probably would be a better ballpark. And um, and then I thought we could hand them out at maybe like the Christmas tree lighting or something. Cause December and January are your prime times for wanting to put bird seed out. Um, so that was just a thought I had, but more community outreach and we can put them in like in like mason jars or just something recyclable, something eco-friendly.
Black bags are not eco-friendly?
Negative Lorenzo.
So uh, I think that's a, that's a great idea. Um. We need to start watching. So who has time to pick, to, to be part of this if we're gonna get it for the tree lighting? Tree lighting is slated for.
Excellent question. I have no idea as of now. Oh, Patrick knows.
Sorry, the fourth, I was on mute. December fourth.
That's December fourth, which is, puts it a couple of weeks away. Uh, who, and we're not gonna have another meeting before then. Who has bandwidth to do this? Cause Erin, I, I love you, but you're not doing it alone.
I can't do it.
Um, you know, bird seed, people have to put, they have to put feeders up. And I know the problems, feeders, there are squirrels, uh, you know, the seed, if you don't get the right kind of.
Right.
She, she would be, she would be, part of this is the education that comes.
Yeah, the education part and uh, I mean, I took my feeder down because of uh bears and mice. Uh, like maybe there's a way around it.
There is. It's, it's the, it's the kind of, of um, it's the kind of seeds and millet that's included in the bird seed mixes. So that's what you have to be careful of, cause like red millet is a filler that's frequently used. But that's like a favorite of like your ground mammals and your squirrels, but a lot of birds actually hate it. They'll throw it on the ground. And that's why you get so many squirrels and chipmunks and mice and stuff.
Alright, so we, we need at least one volunteer to help Erin or else I'm gonna veto this one. Going once, going, and, and when I say veto, it's kick it down the road.
Uh, Caitlin was interested. I know she's not here tonight, but I can check with her and then if she says she doesn't have time, we can always push her back.
Yeah, well, let's, so do I have a motion to support the bird feeding? If Caitlin is, is willing to, to help Erin. I don't want Erin to burn out here. I know she'll do it herself if we let her run.
Karen's got a lot on her plate. Yeah, I'm, I'll make a motion to see if we can do this with, if Caitlin's interested, yeah.
I will second that motion. Um, any additional conversation on it?
Am I getting a budget for the bird seed?
Uh, a hundred and fifty max, but the less the better.
Copy that.
Alright.
Yeah, keep me in the loop, uh, Erin, uh, you know, I may be able to help some way, I don't know. I don't wanna.
Okey dokey.
All my weight into this, but neither do I wanna feel like I'm a slacker here and not helping you out.
The, the Meet Our Farmers is taking all my spare time right now, but it seems like it's, it's very worthy, so.
Yeah, and while I don't have any time, I'm sure that I will show up at the last minute, so. But uh, but again, it's a, wanna be wary of everybody's time. Uh, especially during the holidays coming up. So the next part is the annual report. Tony, thank you very much for putting that together for us.
I hope you signed it, you signed it and uh sent it to uh, who do you have to send it to? Kim or? I know it needed to be there by December, by October thirty-first, right?
It, it went to Judy and.
It went to Judy, okay.
Yeah, did I sign it, Erin? I might have. I'm having a baby, guys.
You did, you signed it.
Yeah, I don't.
Me.
Perfect, perfect. I do stuff and then it's off to the next thing.
You, you have ownership of it.
Yeah, yeah, so, so my name, I'll get, I'll, I'll be the one going to jail if it's wrong. Does anybody have any questions about the annual report? That they'd like to bring up or, or talk about or else we'll go on to the recycling initiative? Alright, and the least exciting part was the in-home report of this meeting. Recycling Initiative Education.
Hmm, good job.
Erin, do you have this up there? Why do we have this up there?
It was discussed the last meeting. It was uh, Kathy, I know, and, and Jess both expressed an interest in, in doing more. About our recycling education.
So I, I have a question for you. Is this something that we want to try to push through? Uh, the, the, the social media pages or however else we're gonna communicate? Or do we actually wanna be at the dump? Cause if it's at the dump, I would say let's hold off till spring.
No, I don't think, I, I don't think it's gonna be at the dump, cause I think it, it's gonna be like, we're gonna be lecturing people and it's not gonna.
It's almost too late by the time they get there, right?
Yeah, it's too late. They got the stuff and you're telling people, oh no, don't throw that out, it doesn't go there, it doesn't go there.
Um, I'm a, a member of the Regional Recycling Task Force. We don't meet until after this meeting. So sometimes it, um, you know, there'll be a delay in information, but we're meeting this Friday. And um, I can ask whatever questions are put out there. Uh, the last meeting, Kim was attending and she said that a lot of people had been having questions about. The, putting the paper recycling into with all the other recycling, cause that's a new thing. And I think people are just confused because it's a new, a new thing, but I think.
I think people are very confused.
Yeah, and I think it would be good to, I think it would be good to tell people exactly what's happening with it and um. Uh, they're, since we are new with H R A, they're working on um. Publications and pamphlets and things like that for public education. Um, they're working on that right now, but um, the agenda for this week's meeting is. Uh, public education, transfer station visits, because Jennifer Baum, who works with the um. With the H R A, she, she and Jennifer Heaton-Jones are the two main people. And Jen, Jennifer Baum went around to all the transfer stations and she was at our transfer station too for several days. Um, so she's gonna give kind of a report of that, I guess. Also on the agenda is the glass recycling program, so I'll get more information about that. Um, plastic bags, um, America's Recycles Day is the fifteenth, so I think that's this weekend. Um, and then uh holiday lights, e-waste, um, and. The recycling billboard contest. Um, we talked about that at the last meeting. They've had um this for fifteen years. And since we are new to it, um, they ask all those region schools. Uh, and I'm the point person for this and because I'm an art teacher, I'm gonna um. Make sure this information's dispersed to the schools and um, they. make sure this information's dispersed to the schools and, um, they, everyone uh, can contribute a design for a billboard, and they didn't have a billboard last year, I guess, but they put it on the side of buses. So, um, whoever wins, the winning billboard message will go out either on a billboard or a side of buses. So that's something that's they're working on, they have also put, I don't know if you guys know about the Trex challenge that, um, many schools have done, and I know, uh, orga- other organizations have done that too, um, the, uh, New Morning Market did it a couple of years ago, so you collect, um, plastic film. And they collect, there's lots of collection places like, uh, grocery stores and Kohl's, I know, and, um, some other department stores, but it's a Trex challenge for the schools. Um, they're trying to, you know, do a competition to see who can get the most accumulated, um, plastic film. And they get a bench that's made out of the lumber that, that Trex makes, um, that's made out of the plastic, um, that's recycled. So that's, they put that, that, uh, competition out to the schools already. The only thing that I saw an issue with is they have to have a person at the schools deliver the collected plastics to whatever place they're collecting it for Trex, and I think that that's a lot to ask somebody to do something else, so I don't know that they're participating in that, but that's what I know so far.
Is this what, what we're talking about here?
Um, yes, yep. So they make, um, they make, uh, the plastic into lumber and building materials. And then what they, if, if you won the contest, they often give a, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know if you could hear, because my computer's been acting weird, so, um, uh, they give a bench that's made out of the lumber to whatever, whoever the winner is.
That's really cool.
Yeah, but I don't know, like I said, I don't know if they're gonna participate or not, because I think to put one more thing on everyone's plate, that, oh yeah, by the way, you have to deliver all of this plastic film somewhere. I don't know that anybody's gonna take that on, so I don't know if they're doing it or not, but.
Well, let's, let's try to figure out one of all the, the recycling ideas that we wanna focus on. Let's focus on one and make it really good, and whether it's the Trex or it's the billboard contest or, or something, let's just get a.
I think we should do the billboard contest, because that's coming up in December. And I distribute all, they give like a template already made, super, super easy, the kids can, um, work on it in their art classes, or they can take it home. And it's, it's, um, I think we distribute them in December, and then they have to turn them in in January. And then they're judged or whatever, but there's, um, fourteen towns competing. And then ceremony and all of that stuff at the end of April or May. Um, so I'd like to focus on that, but also, um, since Patrick is here too, um, I've worked on the recycling stuff with Barbara Henry, um, at Sustainable C T in two thousand eighteen, and we had little blurbs of, we talked with the Conservation Commission too, cuz I worked both, with both, um, committees, um, and we talked about putting a recycling, uh, blurb in the email that goes out to the town email. So, um, maybe we could focus on, on doing that again, um, that the information is right there, just giving it to, I know she puts some things out there, but we can do specific things each week or each, each time.
I think we do something each week.
Yeah.
With, with it, with something simple, like this type of container goes in this bin. Because don't bombard people with a million things, but I, you know, I still have a lot of questions about what goes where. And I go to, I go to the, uh, H R A website, and I, you know, do that search where you can type in the item and it tells you where it goes. Uh, but there's still a lot of, there are a lot of items made with mixed materials, and you just don't know where they go. Uh, you know.
They do a lot of their own sorting, I did have a, 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 a call with H R R A and their, uh, their committee, uh, earlier this week. Um, they also, I, I'm not sure, they, they did bring up some instru- instructional signs up there and some, uh, pamphlets that kind of describe it. Um, they're definitely bought into that partnership, so I'm sure I could take, uh, to your point, Jessica, take some of that information incorporated into our own newsletter just to make it easier for people.
There's a pamphlet up at the, up at the glass recycling, it tells you what goes into glass. You know, there's nothing about what goes into the other bins, and you know, you go there and you, you can see in those bins, there's stuff that shouldn't be there.
Right, and biggest problem with recycling is contamination, it gets turned away because of contamination, so, and like I said, they're working on signage and they're working on, um, the educational piece of it too, because Jennifer's been there for a couple of years now, and she's really working on revamping all of that. But not a lot of people are just gonna go to the website and look stuff up if you put that in.
So let's, uh, let's focus on the, the billboard for this year, Jessica, what help do you need from any of us?
I, I don't need anything, um, because they've already got it all set up, and I'm just gonna distribute it and make collected and everything, but I just want to know if there's any, um, any concerns that we have um, or that you've heard from any other of the residents, and I can bring it to this, this meeting and ask questions, because that's what it's for, so if we have. Yeah.
Um, well, Jessica, maybe you know the answer, because I have a question, I was there today at the, the transfer station, and the, um, that, um, dumpster where you put the five cent deposit bottles, or five cent deposit plastic bottles and cans, that was closed. Uh, so you couldn't, you know, I had to take them home, so I don't know what was going on with that, was it just filled to capacity, cuz it was late Wednesday?
No, there, there's, we have to have somebody sponsor that, that is a program that nobody is sponsoring at this point.
Oh, but shut down?
Well, there's nobody to basically take it, they have, all the metals are going in. They have a bunch of bottle, like the cans and bags and stuff like that, but they need somebody, they were doing it as a town function, but then they stopped a while back. So, I saw that also today. That, that there is a bunch of cans in there, and if we can get somebody to champion that, um, you know, somewhere, they were talking, uh, and this just came out today, and I don't mean to run your, your meeting long. Um, but they were, I was going to contact, uh, someone at, uh, at the booth P U P T O to see if they wanted to do it as a fundraiser, apparently they've collected them at the old firehouse over by Dave Peters' house before. Um, they've collected them, uh, at the, at the back of the market before, um, but we need some organization, so I was gonna reach out to the rec commission, but if you guys uh, have any need of somebody that might wanna use that, can't cap in that, but again, it's a high maintenance type benefit, but it would, it, it should be some, you know, some group that can use it.
So Patrick, can we still collect it at the transfer station?
Uh, they stopped doing it a while back, that's what I was talking.
Well, that, that was a different, that we, we know about that and why that happened.
So, yeah, I, 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 I don't know that the correct answer, I would like to have another place where that could be done, cuz I think it's an opportunity, I guess, there's even been some talk about moving it to Tencent.
When H R A was, took over, then it was back in, back in business, cuz it is, just two weeks ago, I brought.
Yeah.
You're not taking them anymore.
Um, I just wanted to clarify, we did have this discussion in the meeting back in the summer. Um, the organization that would come and pick up the, um, five cents, all the five cents deposits stopped doing it because of, uh, something in co- during the COVID time, but then they, Judy Moker, I spoke to her um, at the end of the summer, and she checked with them, and they said they were going to resume doing that, so that's what we did. And I did check with her and check with Barbara about the past, the boy scouts collected it behind the market, and it was a big mess. A huge thing, and so I don't think that kids should be able to do it, and Barbara, that was Barbara from Barbara's words. And I don't know that we can get another organization, and it should be collected at the transfer station, because there's no other place to do it, because it's a big mess.
So, let's, let's do some data gathering, rather than, than speculation.
I'll call Judy again and ask if that organization, who, they would just come and pick it up and then just give them the check, and I'll call.
They were, they were gonna give us like, uh, eighty percent or of the.
Three cents on the nickel?
That's what they were doing, three cents on a, on a nickel, the other. Yeah, they've stopped it, they've, they've stopped that, so now it is an issue.
Okay.
Well, that's, Aaron, that's, that's get that on for December, because that's something that we, we were, we thought was solved. And now that we know that it's back up on, you know, we have to get involved with that, that's, that's, that's an easy one for us, that's a, that's a lob.
Ask Judy about it again, because she had some other people to, organizations to ask if that person, if that group wasn't gonna be doing it. She had some other places to reach out to, so I can ask her about that.
All right, perfect. All right, uh, we did the meet the trees, uh, month, so that is gonna be after the farms, correct, Tova? Cuz that's on the agenda, it's new business, we already spoke about that.
Yeah, we, um, that would have to be when they lease out.
Okay, so we can hold that off, I think everybody here is excited about that, thinks it's a great idea. Um, but again, just kinda think about over, uh, uh, December and January, ways that we could help uh, in our own ways, specifics, so that people can volunteer. And again, I, I, I wanna make sure that, wha- whatever anybody takes up, that they're, they're getting plenty of help to do.
Do we have any questions for my, the recycling meeting, the, anything you want me to ask of H R A?
Well, the big thing is, you know, why, or what other resources might be available to us to, to do our two-folded goal of, A, recycling first and foremost, but B, that was a, a great, um, source of in, of, of income for the fuel bank. Uh, and it's supposed to be a cold one, so, um.
But that doesn't have anything to do with H R A, that was a separate.
But they might know resources for us to.
Um, I know with the, in private, you talked about a pamphlet that you were gonna put together with, uh, your contact up there. Um, that was gonna be very thorough in terms of, uh, educating people as to what goes where, what gets recycled, what doesn't.
Yes, um, that's what I'm saying, Jen is working on all the educational pieces of it, so I'm sure where that is, and that, that's on the agenda. That's on the agenda for the meeting.
Cause we could, I mean, I think we could promote that if we could just, in, even if we got something in almost every newsletter, every other newsletter, every email blast, like, don't forget to recycle, and this goes in this bin, and this goes where, this doesn't go in the trash. Cuz a lot of stuff is not getting recycled.
On our town website, under the transfer station section, there is the pamphlet that I worked on several years ago and had Jennifer Heaton-Jones from H R A bet it. Is on the website, but I don't know if anybody goes and looks at it or not, but it's on there. So we could maybe point that to people's attention, because it has all like what you do with refrigerator, old refrigerators and mattresses and all oil, all that stuff, it has everything listed on there. And I don't know that they're handing it out anymore at the town hall, or if people have gotten it, because they haven't been going to the town hall, so. We could put that towards, you know, an email to, to put people's attention towards there, cuz it's, it's there on the website.
Any other questions, uh, for Jessica to research for us, or to bring to their attention? All right, yeah, just, you know, if next, uh, we'll, we'll have some, uh, time on the agenda for you to, to get, give your findings. Again, if there's any, um, if you do find out anything sooner than later, you shoot it over to Aaron, so she can send it to us in regards to people what we might wanna reach out to, uh, to find out and so help, uh, solve this recycling can mystery.
Yeah, Jessica, let me know, let me know what, what Judy tells you, uh, is it? I, I know we.
Because I'm disappointed to hear that, because I was really excited that this organization was gonna kick back in, because they give such a a good amount of money on the five cent too, so, and they just come and pick it up, but I don't know what's.
All right, I had, uh, one more thing I wanted to talk about, but, uh, we're running short on time, but, uh, I just wanted you to guys to think and I'll, we'll bring it up next, next month, and Aaron, if you can add this to the agenda next month. Um, I like to see if, if the, the kids at school, if somebody wants to take on a senior project to do a little video on, uh, different parts of conservation, I know seniors are always looking for projects. Um, you know, I'd love to, to, to have someone like, uh, it's funny, it's like Hollywood Squares over here, I see Patrick's up my, uh, upper right-hand side. Um, you know, have him, him show people how to recycle or, or, uh, something like that, or, and, and.
Yeah, there are plenty of environmental things you can do with, for senior projects, uh.
Well, the, there's one, two, and three-minute videos, and if we could get a bunch of one, two, and three-minute video, videos and sprinkle them around, um, you know, I, I think there's, that's, that's gonna be a great, uh, that'll be a great advertisement vehicle for doing the right thing. Again, I think, I feel like there's many more people who wanna do the right thing, and they just might not know how. And, and that ignorance is keeping them from, from doing it, so if we could bring the information to them in a, in manageable way, um, you know, I keep printing out white papers that are thirty pages long that I'd love to read, and I don't have time, but I do always have time for a one-minute or two-minute video, especially if it's, uh, thought-provoking. And on that, if anybody can YouTube, uh, watch the, uh, the Great Garbage Pile in the Pacific. There's an update on the kid from the Netherlands who's took it on, this kid uh, took on the project, cleaning the great garbage patch in the Pacific. And, uh, he's doing it right now, it's amazing, and I, uh, really recommend that everybody, uh, uh, take a look at it. Uh, a matter of fact, I'll find Aaron, I'll send you the link to it, and if you could send it out to everybody, that'd be great.
Yeah, no problem.
With that in mind, it is thirteen minutes after. Does, uh, anybody have anything to say, or do I hear a motion for the adjournment for the good of the order?
Quick question for Patrick, um, Patrick, Barbara had always had me keep her in the loop on emails for the commission, do you want me to do the same for you? And just DC you on everything, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I was gonna Google, I was gonna YouTube that video right now, I wasn't gonna wait for that, cuz now I'm curious, so I wrote it down. It's, it's called Great Garbage Patch in the, uh, in the Pacific, and I'll find it, okay?
Yeah, you, you'll find a bunch of stuff, but look for the recent one, it came out like in the last week or so, that's the update. Proof of concept is done, guys. All right, so with, uh, any going, one more time, anyone, anything else to, to a- add? Do I have a motion for the adjournment for the good of the order?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any, uh, any conversation, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed and wanna stay on for hours and hours more? No, okay, then with that, I will call this meeting, uh, to order, or to, what's the opposite of order?
Well.
The close.
Yeah.
I will adjourn, thank you all, we'll see you next month.
Everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Goodnight, guys.
Thanks.